So we'll, we'll get started tonight and just go through, I'll be referring to the files that are in your packet. The first, the first file is approval of the committee meeting minutes that we held on February 8th of this year. And is there anything on the committee meeting minutes that corrections need to be made? Okay, one thing that I noted on there and Ms. Jennifer, if you would, Ms. McGill was present and that was not reflected in the, in the board members. So if you could see that, that she gets added in. Okay, anything else regarding the committee meeting minutes?
Obviously she was there.
Okay, then we'll move on to the, the board meeting minutes. Those in your package, packet had a chance to review those. Again, I'd like to add that Ms. McGill's name be added to the attendee list on that. Okay, nothing else on, on the board meeting minutes? Get into the budget amendments and transfers. As quoted in your packet, we have three transfers that were presented to us. Those all appear to be from the federal fund 142, serving three different, three different programs from that. One is for the Title IV program and so can be moving funds around from, from what was original budgeted salary and wages along with the corresponding benefit match, not benefit social security match, and then transferring those funds that are needed for some non-certified substitute teachers and some software. So that's the budget amendment for, for the 142 Title IV sub-fund. Any questions on that? Okay, if not, we'll go on to the next item that's just scrolled down that, that page. You'll see this is federal fund 142 and this is 901, the IDA Part B fund where the support services monies that were budgeted for support services for travel and other contracted services being asked to approve the transfer of that over to equipment, special education equipment for iPads for the classroom, that total of $5,500. Questions, comments on, on the, any, either of those transfers? Failed to mention the first transfer was $774.93. Okay, then, none, then we'll move on to the, the next budget amendment and that's federal fund, federal budget and it's a sub-fund 897 and that's for the access for all ordinance network. This is discretionary funds that we receive from the Fed to grants to the state and these funds will be used for, for teachers that are working with students for after hours and also purchasing, purchasing materials and supplies that are needed for, to meet the program guidelines. From the, from the salary and wages, the total looks to be about $11,500. Then you have $10,500 for instructional, instructional materials and supplies. You have other supplies and material of $20,000 and then in-service staff development of $8,000. So that's where the, how the monies will be debited and credited for, for that, that account to cover those, those expenses. Any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one for, for Mr. Gruber. I noticed a lot of times we have those other contracted services or other supplies and materials as needed. Is that just an accounting term that they use for items such as, you know, office supplies or stuff like that? What, what makes that other contracted services or other supplies as needed? What, what makes that, how do you say that, you know, where that we know what it is?
Yeah, so each program, and I can let Mr. Markham speak specifically to this one perhaps, but each program, that might mean a little something different. Your contracted services is going to be just that, where we contract with another vendor or an outside agency for a service or a good. But the other materials and supplies is usually equipment and usually consumable items. But in this case, Mr. Markham, you, can you speak to that one? Which one is, we're on?
As far as, as titles on the accounts, those are set forth by the state and so they're uniform across the state. So if something doesn't specifically fall into a certain category and then it kind of goes into this other supplies, materials, that's where those terms go from.
I can address that some too. Some of it is a line item specifically that students are going to use. Another one might be specifically that teachers are going to use materials or if it doesn't fit any of those, you put in another. They really, we try not to use other, but a lot of times it's who's going to use the materials.
So would it, would it be reasonable to say that instructional materials and supplies would be what the teachers would use and that would be your line item for, for?
Yeah, sometimes it's office materials. They just, they just tell you which place it goes in, so.
And board members, though, I think it, I think it's worth us noting and just being reminded that the accounts and account descriptions, those are set forth, as Mr. Markham said, by the state. So those are uniform, I guess, going to be uniform across the state. All districts are using the same, the same accounts and, and descriptions, probably the same account numbers as well. So, so just keep that in mind. I think that's a great question, Mr. McDonald, to, to ask, you know, what does that mean? Because it may not be as evident to us just based on the fact that the, we weren't the ones that were setting up the, the account names.
I'm usually good for one good question to make, so.
Well, we're waiting on that one.
Oh, good one.
I'm just teasing, Mr. I'll, we kid because we care, Mr. McDonald.
I know.
All right. Any other, any other questions regarding the, any other questions regarding our, our budget amendments and transfers?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, but it's not about the budget and transfer. It's about the 9.25 to 9.75 that's going to be on a referendum. Wondering if you'd like to probably discuss that or have Chad explain to us or Mr. D. See what that would do to benefit the schools and/or the county.
So could we, let's go through our consent agenda items and then we'll circle back around that when we get finished with this. So I'll make sure that we, we come back to that. Okay. All right, next, then we'll move on. Policy, policy report, there's nothing to report unless any, any of you have anything regarding policies that were reviewed for prior month for section five. We have no new policies, no policy amendments that, that we need to, need to make. And so just give you the opportunity, if there's a policy that needs to be brought up, we can, we can discuss that.
I think we should have a policy that there's chocolate at every meeting.
And caffeine.
I'm just, I'm just going to put that out there.
Add that in.
We'll have to, we'll have to put that on the agenda for a future meeting, okay? All right, then if not, then we'll move on to, to the maintenance report. The maintenance report looks pretty clean. Looks like the, there's good progress being made at Bondi Croft. Know that, glad to get the bleachers in and be more moving towards getting the, the gym all ready for, for next fall. It appears that all other schools are just undergoing general maintenance and, and nothing, nothing to note there, unless there's anything that didn't make it on this report.
So, Mr. Chairman, it may be somewhere else. I thought, is there a update? Maybe that's on a different report for like the softball and the Bondi Croft project? Is that something that's more different?
I'm going to mention that in my reference update, but.
Okay.
There wasn't anything on the, on the maintenance report.
And maintenance reports provided by Mr. Allen. Okay. So those would be more day-to-day maintenance items that he would hear report on. All right, then, then moving on, we'll go to school report that was presented to us for, for all the schools in, in the district. Notice a common theme on that is testing and getting prepped for, for, for T-CAP tests as, as well as, as other, other tests that, that'll be taking place as we go into this, this season of the year. Any, any updates on that? Anything, anybody have any comments on, on the school report?
Did y'all see that cute little picture on the high school? Aren't those just as cute as can be?
Yes.
Like.
I think I missed.
Yeah, there was the report that Mr. Dean put in there and then there's the much better improved version than Ms. Allen does. And so that was just put in there, so if you want to see the updated version with pictures.
And appreciate Ms. Allen, Allen doing that and that would, that would certainly be something good to get on social or websites or anything like that. And, and congratulations to all the students went to Scope and, and Justin's Renaissance Learning Conference last week, so. Simmons, anything you want to share on that?
On the Scope Conference?
Yes. Are you going to be sharing, sharing on that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not going to steal anybody's thunder, right?
I can't give that to Mr. Brown.
Yeah, it's not.
Now, Ms. Gill's got some.
I have a question. What about the Renaissance Leadership Conference?
Ask Ms. Gill about that.
I did go to that.
Great, well, could you give us an update on that?
Uh, do you, we, they, a bunch of schools basically just came together and told us about how they implemented Renaissance and the methods they used. And a very common one was like using cards, depending on like what grades you get, your attendance. Like you know how like in the high school, the seniors get like a senior skip day? If you have perfect attendance, you get one day off, basically, is what they did.
It's a portrait.
That's what I'm thinking. One day. I just laugh.
And like if you have perfect, like if you have all A's, you get like a free, a free admission into sports. And if you have A's and B's, you get half off, stuff like that.
Okay, now where was this conference held at?
That's kind of neat.
Honestly, I'm not sure. There were so many, like high schools, that stuff that went there, that I don't even know the name of the actual high school that.
What town was it in?
It was in Nashville.
In Nashville, okay. Great.
I think that's a great idea.
So, and there was two from, from high school that went?
Uh, no, two from, no, there was, there was like four, five, six. One, five, I gotta count. One, two, three, four, five, six, twelve.
Twelve, great.
Yeah.
So was this primarily made up of juniors and seniors?
Yes.
Just juniors?
Juniors and seniors, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
It might have been a sophomore selected in or somewhere.
Well, that's, that's, that's great. So, so ideas that you, that you learned for that, if you want to bring back to a, a board meeting, we'll, I'll allow you time on the agenda if, if you'd like to do that.
I would like to do that, that sounds fun.
Okay, so we'll try to make note to remember that for, for our April meeting and we'll give you, give you a chance to report on that in, in, in our regular meeting, okay?
Can we talk about that after, like, like later, like after everything?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we can, we can go over the details after, after, after our meeting, okay?
Thank you.
All right, great.
Hey, before we go.
You're just the cutest.
Yes, she is. Before we go on, I just want to say, me and Mr. Howard and Ms. Stone, we all went up to Bondi Croft and we got to read two o'clock. It was such a blessing, it was just, it was, mine was fourth grade, so it was, they actually asked questions. Yours was second, what was yours?
Second.
Second. So we got, they brought both classes in there with fourth grade together and mine actually asked some questions and it was, it was great. I enjoyed it.
I had a little boy that asked me how old I was and I said, "How old do you think I am?" He said, "Twenty-five."
And you're like, "Oh, yay!"
The teacher said, "Take it." I said, "I will take that."
So, just a question, did y'all have any butterflies actually reading out loud to the, these kids, you know, about someone, or is, I would have had the butterflies?
Okay, I did, yes.
Okay, all right.
But it kind of went away, it got better, because they were just all listening. But now, one of the teacher's kids was in there, so he was asking questions. So I really appreciated that.
That's great.
I had green eggs and ham, it was hard to mess that one up.
I'm bashful, so I, I, I don't really like to read too much, but I made it through it just fine.
Well, I'm sure y'all, I'm sure y'all did a great job, so thank you, thank you for doing that, representing the board.
We had a good time.
Yes, we did.
All right, so then we'll move on to budget report. Mr. Vicki, would you like to give us an update on that?
I can do that. I apologize upfront, I'm wearing two-year-old glasses, so either Mr. Markham wrote it really blurry or it's the, it's the glasses.
Who's Charlie?
I blurred it.
Says we have completed property tax collection season. We are running a, running a small percentage behind on current year property taxes, but expect those to catch up during March and April and people making late payments. The other sources of revenue line is significantly over budget due to insurance refunds we have received. That should dwindle down as we offset those against associated expenditures before year end. Expenditures are ahead of the prior year, primarily due to the change in teacher payroll as we have discussed each, each month this year. Utilities continue to track below budget for the fiscal year. We don't see an anomaly here, but think maybe we are realizing some savings due to efforts across the district for energy efficiency. And I think that's probably true, there's been things over the years to cut things back, so that's probably been shown now. So we are tracking pretty close to expectation thus far throughout the year. Bottom line is we are currently showing 3.8 million excess in revenues over expenditures, but that will drop as we ramp up spending here at the fiscal year end. And thank you, Mr. Mark.
Okay. Questions regarding budget? Mr. Howard?
Mr. Chairman, Chad, these spreadsheets that you show us, the General Purpose School Fund, 141, everything, is that year-to-date from January or is that fiscal year from June, July, or East Alabama?
Fiscal year from July 1.
Utilities are looking good. Okay, thank you.
Probably helps that we've had a little bit milder winter, with the exception of a couple of weeks.
Yes. Next year, we need to watch out.
I'm sorry.
Just watch out next year, yeah.
All right. Any other comments on, on our, our budget report? Okay, then we'll move on to the TLN report. Mr. Howard?
Mr. Chairman, it could be long and lengthy, but I'm just going to cut it down to the bare essentials right here, out of 1,500 possible bills. And also I want to add in there too, I appreciate you all letting me go to the legislation and laws. A lot of it was reviewed, what we would get in July in Gatlinburg, but they did have two new legislators there and vouchers was a big thing that they wanted to talk about and discuss and they gave their viewpoints. And they also went over in more detail on how bills get started, how they work through the House, how they work through the Senate, how they come back to joint effort. And so that's where I want to pick up on my TLN news right here, because most of the bills are still in, you know, the first or second reading and being assigned to committees. Now, from that point right there, everything could change and I could, I could sit here and I could look until I'm blurred and, and that's what I am, I'm blurred-eyed right now reading all the bills today and, and every one of them could change from the time they leave the House to the Senate and back to the joint committees. So, and I don't want to try to do a shock and awe and people go, "Wow, what is that right there?" And it never come to fruition, never, never amount to anything. So let's just hold on for maybe the next meeting right there after everything is, is starting being finalized. But after, you know, the, when it goes to committees and comes back and goes for a third reading, which will probably be closer to the end of this month right here, then either the sister bill in the Senate, the House, or identical, or then they don't, they go to a, what's the committee called where they debate them, a debate between them, then the Speaker of the House. So we're really getting close to some of the things, but I know the voucher issue. The voucher issue, if you want to look it up, it's under multiple headings. One of the headings, headings is the Educational Savings Account, another heading is under Educational Freedom Scholarship. Mainly the debate between the, the House and the Senate right now is different types of testing accountability, equality. Mr. D may want to comment on, on any or all of these, I'm sure he's up to date on funding. The House and Senate have different ideas of what they want to fund, how they want to fund it, what they want to bring in there. One side's bringing in teachers' pay increases and other ones bring in insurance where the teachers would be added to the state employees for their insurance. Another side's bringing in whether students moving from school to school after this new account right here and using the account money, whether they would be able to step in as that year's athletes qualified or having to be sidelined for a year, you know? And then another, another one of the things that one of the legislators said, "We just want to try to eliminate any pop-up schools that might plague the problem with this moving forward or backwards or sideways." So they're trying to look at every aspect and then come in with a solution and we'll see how that turns into it. If not, I could go into about 15 or 20 that I researched, it might not mean anything right now. But that's where I want to leave it. Anyone has any questions about certain bills, I'll try to look them up, look the number up, have a report on it next week. And I know Mr. D asked me a question too, because TSBA does send out, and I don't know if they send it out to everyone, but I know I get them, about TSBA, what they're supporting, what they're against, does anyone else get, get those and read them? So I don't want to take up the time reviewing those, but Mr. D suggested that if you, if someone's not getting those in their emails, that they be presenting those also, so they can all be on, we can all be on the same page and not take up time at our meetings. So that's about all I have, Mr. Chairman. Anyway, you all will go with all that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Howard about anything coming out of the legislature during this time? The vouchers is, that's probably the biggest impacting legislation that's, that's being debated right now that affect the whole state, how it would affect Black County, yet to be seen, but something that we certainly should keep our, keep our attention to. Think is, one of the things that, talking to Mr. D about, that some of these, as you mentioned, there were multiple bills that had vouchers in them, that sometimes that they will, the, they will take the bill and attach it to another bill that may or may not sound like vouchers. And so that's, that's just part of how the sausage gets made, I guess, but just, we have to certainly be, be mindful of all that, that's, that's taken place there legislative that could have impact on, on our district. And we talked about that in our, in our prior meetings as we came into this year. All right, then, any, if, nothing else on the TLN report, we'll move in and just review our threat assessment report that was, that was given. It does look like that there are a couple of open items that are being investigated. I'm sure the, the staff administration would be, be taking care of that through, through proper order. But you can see there's a majority of what we've been presented with have been closed and with, with no finding of, of threat, which is a, a good thing. Any other comments on our threat assessment report?
I got a question for Mr. D. When they're open, are they still in school?
It depends, it depends on the case.
On how serious?
And, you know, there are things, obviously we don't discuss, you know, specifics, some of these things in open meeting, but.
Yes.
But it, it depends. And that, this particular one, I think, may be closed, it's showing open right now because at the time that we put it in, they've had time to work those cases.
Right.
But it just depends on the situation, it's case by case.
Okay, thank you.
Any other regarding threat assessment reports? Okay, moving on to personnel report. May notice that, and Mr. D allowed you to speak, this could just been a clerical error, but we're only seeing data that goes through December 23rd. So not sure if anything of significance has, has taken place regarding the personnel reports. But if you look on the information that we're giving, it was just through the 23rd, December of 2023.
Is that, is, is pulled from December, is that showing this thing?
There was on February 1.
Excuse me?
There was on February 1.
On the summary page.
On the, is that the one, I have to check, there's another tab at the bottom.
We just have the PDF.
Okay, so that's cut off, but that must be cut off, it was in a separate, it must have been a dropdown, so I must have neglected to put that part on there.
Well, Ms. Rigsby, is there anything, just to update us on, going on as far as, as far as personnel?
Um, no, we still, the only thing that we have open currently is some educational assistance in the middle school that's pressing anyway.
Okay. Appreciate you handling that. HR is, that is a, a large task, especially with as many employees as we have in our, in our district. Including in that, we do have the February 2024 personnel changes that lists new hires, terminations, and transfers. So you can, you have that information that was provided to you. Any questions on that? Okay, then, in, sale of, yes, and finally on our consent agenda items, sale of surplus items, we have several that have been, been submitted for, for disposal and these would all go through gov deals available to the, the public. So we have a, we have a 2006 van, another 2003 van, tractor, lawnmower, bobcat attachment, and two 2004 school buses. And I'm sort of assuming those school buses are coming out because they've aged out of the, of the fleet. So those items will be, are, will be up for disposal. So unless there's any question, comments, concerns?
I just got a question. What do they deem unsafe about the tractor?
So there are some issues, it's an older tractor and it sits very high and there's a tipping issue.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And a lot of the things that we mow, a lot of, you think about our campuses have steep hills and things.
Yes.
And we had a previous employee was the only one that would even drive it because of, for that reason. They just really, we have other tractors that we use for that now and we have a bush hog attachment on our skid steer, so that, that's really the issue.
That was my only question, I mean.
It functions fine, it's just, it wasn't good for our purposes.
Right, thank you.
Great for somebody in Iowa.
There you go, that's right.
I also.
Or Indian.
Also want to mention that a couple of these items, the tractor and the bobcat, baco attachment, we're going to place, what's, reserves on that so that we can try and get a decent amount of money for that, so we don't lose money on those, those pieces of equipment.
And that reel mower, I think you put it Monterey has.
Monterey wants to purchase that.
Yeah, they wanted to purchase that, since it's another government, we can do that with that.
So do we have to do that on gov deals or can we just make an agreement with Monterey?
Not, since it's another government, we can just make it an agreement.
Yeah, I think that's great.
But it still had to be approved, yeah, it's still, but they want to buy it and we would love to sell it to them, we have to get it approved.
Well, we can help another school out, that's, yeah, I think that's great.
All right, so.
What are these items sitting at, are they maintenance?
Uh, yes.
Bus garage?
The bus maintenance or the canning?
The bus.
Okay.
The school system. Okay, so.
That's govdeals.com?
Is that, is it?
It's govdeals.
Is it dot com or?
Dot com.
Dot com. All right, so that concludes the, the items that we have for, that we would be approving under consent agenda. So if there's, if there, I don't hear anyone saying that something needs to be pulled out for further discussion, then we'll, we'll consider that, that we're all in agreement of, of those items and, and expect that for approval during the consent. All right, so that, that being said, so I guess, Mr. Howard, I'll come back to you on the item that you wanted to discuss.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county is going to. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county is going to try to go from 9.25 to 9.75 on sales tax. And there's, they tried this once before and there's been a lot of questions and discussion, what it would be, what it would mean. And I would just like to hear the correct details on how it will affect the county and the school system if this is approved or not approved.
We'll let Mr. Markham speak. So I guess two, three years ago, the city of Sparta went through a special election and increased the sales tax rate in there from 2.25 to 2.75. The 7% is a state tax. The 2.25 is the local tax. The state makes, the maximum that the counties or the cities can raise it to is 2.75. So the maximum sales tax that you can have in the state is 9.75. Most places are at that. The city of Kukunpa, none of counties at that. I believe the city of Cross School is as well. And inside the city limits of Sparta, it's, you pay 9.75 on sales tax. Once you go outside the city limits of Sparta, you're at 9.25. That half a percent generates roughly about a million, would generate about a million dollars a year for the county if that were adopted. One thing that I think people don't think about, or one way I like to think about it, 65% of the sales in Black County occur within the corporate limits of the city of Sparta. So 65% of your transactions occur within the city of Sparta limits. 16% of your population lives inside the city limits. That 16% are the only ones that voted on a sales tax increase. They're the only ones that vote on the, that can vote on the alderman who have the jurisdiction to determine how that money is spent. So in effect, the county residents living outside the city limits of Sparta are no different than somebody that lives in Nashville coming through and paying the sales tax. You're coming through, you're spending your money, but you have no representation on how that money's spent. So I think of it like that. I think that the county taxpayers are paying the majority of that and they have no representation on how that money's spent because they have no say so in who sits on the board of aldermen. Not saying that they're spending it bad or good at all, but just a way of looking at it. It would mean roughly about 80, $82,000 to $83,000 a month for the county. When I say the county, I'm talking about the school system as well. By law, half that money has to go to the school system. And that's where we get into some things that work through the budgetary process about maintenance of effort and how that those funds can be used to offset some of the property tax revenue that would come to the school system. So the school system would not see any reduction in revenue, would probably see an increase in revenue. But just looking at it from a county perspective as a whole, it's about $83,000 more dollars a month that would be coming into the county. And the city of Sparta would still receive half of what they're collecting now in that number by law. And that's only on the things that they collect. So it's, to me, it makes sense because the majority of people are already paying it and you don't have any say so in it and you don't think twice about going to Kukunpa or coming into the city of Sparta and buying something just because of that sales tax rate. And so I think it just makes sense. But I'm glad to offer any questions or answer any questions.
Are there any stipulations against the board members voicing their opinion on that?
So the county commissioners and the county and the school board can support that, but they can't use school funds or county funds to do so. So if, you know, the county commissioner or the school board wanted to go together as individuals and pay for something, publish it or go out and talk about it, no, that's perfectly fine. But the county or the school system can't have an official position on it.
So we as school board members have to do it as just someone in there because the public doesn't understand it. I mean, I've already heard people say they're not voting for it because they don't get it.
They just think it's angry.
And that's what happened, I think, the last time.
It was.
People hear the word tax, they're out.
Yes, that's, that's it.
But everybody that, just about everybody that I spoke to that said, tell me what this is about, when I explained it as Mr. Markham just did, they said, oh, well, I would vote for that.
Yeah, they don't know.
So I just think it benefits the county and I support the city. We work very well together. But it's money that you're already paying, but you're not reaping any of the tax benefit from it than the city is. And so, you know, that's about the short and sweet of it. Everybody that I've shared that story with said, well, I would vote for that tax.
Yeah. Like you say, it needs to be put in layman's terms for people would understand it. Because the commissioners I've spoke with, they're like, they don't, the public doesn't understand. You know, we, something's got to be put out there.
So that'll be on the August, on the August election. That'll be on your ballot. And one thing to note is if you're a resident of the city of Sparta, you don't get to vote on this. So if you're registered inside the city, you've already voted on a tax increase because you voted in the tax increase whenever it was raised the first time. So this will only be for county residents. And sometimes people get confused on that.
Yeah.
Mr. Markham, is this, is this just not understanding? But was it, is it possible that the state could come in and, and up their amount basically take that 5% if the counties did not raise it to that maximum level?
I guess they could. In theory, I guess they could. I've not heard any discussion about that happening, but I mean, it's certainly a possibility if times get tight for the state, they seem to take.
They could go in and look at all the counties that were not taking advantage of that maximum rate and then, and then basically take that money back to Nashville. Okay. Appreciate.
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, I have one thing on this whole, I said, I saw something on social media. Not for sure if it was Roger Mason or Cal Goff, one of the commissioners had put a little fact sheet together that kind of explained the whole tax referendum. So we might want to look into that and as individuals, you know, that have social media and maybe, you know, print that off and give that to, you know, to our constituents that we run into and say, here's what it's about. Here's coming straight from county commission and it'll work out good in our favor.
It's probably Roger Mason. He did an exceptional job last time trying to explain it and putting it in layman's terms for people to understand. But it was kind of a little too, I felt like, too late in the game. You know, I mean, it was too close to the election time before it.
And another thing to think about with sales tax is that it is people that come in here that pay that, that support the county, their revenue that generates. And as the park, the Virgin Falls State Park gets up and going, we'll have more people coming through, coming through. And hopefully in that area, you know, there'll be some additional business. And that's just extra money that those people are leaving here that we should, that we have the opportunity to take advantage of and reduces the burden on property taxpayers.
Mr. Markham, you said it was 65% as far as in the city versus the county sales tax?
65% of the sales transactions, yeah.
Or in the city?
I can't believe it's not like 85%.
Yeah, that's what I, I was.
I really thought it was a lot.
There's a lot of dollar deals out there. Yes.
There is in online sales. So anytime that, three years ago, the state really changed the way the SIS taxes were done. And so anytime you buy something on Amazon or something like that, depending on where you're having it shipped to, determines that sales tax rate. So that has some effect.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a couple more things here.
Absolutely.
Help me clarify here, Chad. Just the 0.5% right there, that right there is going to add up to 80 something thousand a month. Is that correct? It's not the 9.75?
Right. Yes, just that 0.5.
0.5 additional. So you're talking about a million dollars additional that would be coming to the potential to the county. And thank you, Chad. And the second part, Mr. Chairman, if we're not live streaming right now for our work session, would you want to add this to our agenda?
We are live streaming.
We are.
Okay.
Oh, gosh, you told me that before. We can't put me on camera.
We are live streaming.
Yes, it is, it is live streamed.
Okay. I just want to make sure the information, you know, is heard with as many people as possible. If not, we'll, we'll, don't want to lick our cat twice, but we'd do it again for this purpose if you wanted to.
Okay. I pray, any other, any other questions?
Sorry about that.
Okay. Anything else?
We found real stick.
Anything else regarding our committee meetings? I think I may have one note here. Bear with me just one second. Oh, yeah. So last month, this is just a little housekeeping and we won't put this agenda item. But last month, we so signed a code of conduct and we kind of somehow got off kilter with the names and where they go. So, so we're gonna, Mr. Drab Barker's gonna send that back around. We're gonna just, between meetings, we're gonna sign that, just clean that up so it'll look cleaner. Then also, one, at your, at your desk, you have the cheat sheet of the Robert Sturles of Order, Quick Reference, Quick Study Guide, which can also be used as a quick reference guide. So all the board members should have, have one of those and also have the book as well. I have the book. I have the book. So we all have the, all have the Quick Reference Guide. So Mr. Howard, I appreciate you bringing that up and we'll, if something got to the point where we had to dive into that Quick Reference Guide, we may have to take recess where we can look at the fine print. But, but we'll, we'll manage through that. But that's going to be a good tool for us to have if needed. But typically, we haven't run into many cases like that in our meetings. So, but we have it if we need it. Okay?
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So I asked for something to be put on the agenda, number 13, the grants awarded to the district. So I got some paperwork and stuff today. Can I just table that and take it off for right now? I don't know how we do that. Or do you just want to skip it when we get to it or how do you?
Why don't you just give us a report when we get to the meeting and just say that, table that till next meeting and we'll put it on an agenda item for the next.
Perfect. Thank you.
And then one other thing, Ms. Howard, what you mentioned about, we talked about retreat and you have, do you have any information you want to share with us on that?
Yes, I spoke with Fall Creek Falls and actually to get a room there at the end to have our meeting, we have to have like reserved 20 rooms, which we don't need that many. So we can do one at the rec hall, which is over by the visitor's center. Now, I actually, she did not tell me how much that would be, but I do have the dates. And these dates I'm going to give you are, the rec hall is available. So April 19th and 20th, now that's a Friday night and Saturday. And we can have that rec hall as late as we need it that afternoon. We can start it on Friday afternoon if you guys want to and then pick it back up Saturday morning. And so April 19th and 20th, May 10th and 11th, May 17th and 18th, May 24th and 25th, and June 7th and 8th.
Okay. All right, so.
And now that doesn't include food because it's away from the lodge. But I do have, they did say that they could provide box lunches for us on that Saturday. Yes. So you've got, I mean, we could, and one of those may be Mother's Day weekend. I've not even looked at that. I've not looked at the calendar to see what that is. I was kind of surprised because rooms are available for every one of these Friday nights to accommodate. I think I said, I think I overdid it and shot it and maybe said 12 rooms or something, just guessing. Because I didn't know exactly how many was coming and who all would be there.
Okay. So, all right, so the, appreciate one, appreciate the work. Because I know that's, that's not easy.
It's not easy.
So.
And I hate to say it, but getting somebody from the state to work with me on this was kind of rough.
So that's, that would be at.
And I work with them every day.
That would be at Fall Creek Falls?
Yes.
Okay. So.
Mother's Day is May the 12th.
Okay, so see, that's that May weekend. So probably won't scratch that one then.
Okay, so you want me to go and scratch that off?
Scratch that one. And I don't know when Memorial Weekend is. Is it the?
That would be the 24th.
24th and 25th, so.
I'm going to be at my son's wedding on April.
I knew there was some time. I just couldn't remember. So scratch that one.
Scratch it down pretty quickly.
Because I know people probably are going out of town for Memorial Day or something. I know everybody's getting ready. And then I know we've got some.
When we're doing our other meeting, that Memorial Day, you know, we got our budget.
The budget.
It's the next week, isn't it? I've got to look. Let me see.
So the 17th, 18th, I think graduation is that calling Monday?
Yeah, 13th.
That's the before. It's the before.
What, the 13th? Y'all get out that early? Listen at you, y'all.
You've learned everything there is to learn, right?
I think so, yeah.
That's awesome. Mine was like the 27th.
I think the 18th is the final day of school, but.
Right, so.
That would impact you.
Not necessarily. I mean, I could be there then.
Ms. Howard, did we scratch off, or Board, did we scratch off the 24th, 25th?
That's Memorial Weekend, so.
Okay.
That's up to you guys. I mean, I'm not going anywhere.
The 17th, 18th or June 7th and 8th?
17th, 18th or June 7th and 8th.
You're saying it's Friday and Saturday?
That's a Friday night and Saturday, whatever time.
And do we have room at the lodge or we don't have?
We, well, there's still Friday, there's still rooms for Friday night for these dates she gave me. I would just have to kind of get back with her and let her know.
But they won't, we won't be able to use their conference center, okay, for.
Because they want people, they want you to have 20 rooms in order to use the conference center there. That was the only thing.
So they have suites. They have three suite rooms. S U I T E rooms. And.
Thanks for clearing.
And I know because actually on June 9th, we have our leadership conference there that we've had for 50 years and that I'm in charge of. So, I mean, I would vote for the 7th and 8th because I'm going to be there the 9th anyway.
Hey, yeah.
But, you know, I, one of us could get a suite and then they're big enough to have the, you know, eight of us or whatever there whoever wants to come to that meeting.
Well, I'll call tomorrow.
But they have one on each level. And if we got one of those rooms, then I think we, you know, we can meet them there and have a meeting.
And then we're still there, yeah. So that would be great.
Just a thought.
I think that's a good idea.
Rather than having to go to the rec center.
Rather than having to go to the rec center.
In my mind, the rec center, somebody in Colree says, go play ping pong.
Well, I'm worried about food. Sorry. I was like, okay.
That's my girl.
I want to eat.
All right, so, all right, so Board, is there, are we in consensus that the June 7th and 8th would be, would be a target date that we would want to do this and this would be Friday evening and Saturday morning to give us the evening time?
Right.
To spend a few hours that, that night and then we would have?
Well, until checkout, yeah.
Four hours on that. Maybe we could play checkout.
Well, if he's going to be there for the next day.
Yeah, he won't have to work.
Yeah, we could probably just go ahead and keep that room. Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, and we can stay as long as you need to. And they have plenty of common areas outside and tables, things along the porch and patio, so.
Okay, so, so it's like we're moving towards that planning direction. So we'll let, give you the opportunity to work with Mr. Drab Barker on that. And y'all coordinate the details and let us know, but I'm hearing no objections at the moment.
Yes, and I will get with them tomorrow and make sure a suite room is available for those two nights.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
So, Mr. Chairman, I did have, I do have a conflict, but I may can do that. But I definitely could do the April one, but that's when you're going, right?
Golfing in Maui or something?
If we do June, I've only got like a couple of months.
Where you going to be on Maui or something?
Yeah.
Are you going to be golfing? Hey, are you going to be golfing at Fall Creek Falls that weekend because?
That course is not good enough for me.
I mean, that's just recorded.
So.
They're good or sweet.
So, Ms. Yiggy, I think you should work till it's time for you to go.
Well, yeah, I get that, but that's kind of a.
Leave it up, I'll leave that up, leave that up to you. So if, if you're, I think leave that up to you, but you said you could make. If, if you're, I think, leave that up to you, but you said you could make that if.
That's our.
Okay. All right, so, so then we're looking at June eighth and ninth, and Ms. Fowler, Mr. Draburger will get everything confirmed for that getters. Thank you for putting that.
Seventh and eighth.
Yeah.
No, eighth and ninth. Mr. D is there the night.
Okay, if, if that's the case, no other business, we'll return our committee meeting and prepare to start a regular board meeting here in about eight minutes. Eight-minute board.
... education to order. If you would, please stand. Mr. Simmons is going to lead us in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to take this moment and welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. Appreciate you being here. For staff, board members, members of the public, we appreciate your support and your involvement in the White County school system. I'd like to recognize Ms. Peake and her staff for hosting us tonight. Thank you for opening up your facilities here at Northfield. Board meetings are subject to Tennessee open meeting statutes, and so for the courtesy of the public, we are also live streaming our board meetings and they're archived. Link access can be found at whitecountyschools.net under the department menu, School Board, and School Board Meeting Schedules. So if you are not able to join us in person, like to join us online, you can do so. So this time, I'd like to move to the next item on our agenda, which is disclosure of conflicts of interest. If there's any board member that has conflict of interest they need to disclose regarding agenda items on tonight's meeting, please let it be known.
Mr. Chairman, I'll do as I do each and every meeting, just making it aware that my wife is a teacher in the school system. Nothing on the agenda tonight is in conflict of that, but I just want to make sure that my vote would be for the betterment of the students of White County and the system as a whole. Also want to say that item number eight is an approval for me to seek the office of TSBA president in the upcoming year, and I will not be voting on that. I will recuse myself from voting on that when we come to that point.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, I will state the same as Mr. McDonald, except for I'm not running for president.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hickey.
Mr. Chairman, I also have immediate family and distant family, church brothers and sisters, neighbors, friends working within the school system, but I make all my decisions with, based on the best information that I have for the entire school, for the entire system, equally with all consideration of benefits of the whole and no bias or personal preference.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Howard. So Ms. Sims, let it be known that Mr. McDonald, Ms. Hickey, and Mr. Howard all stated they have family members that work inside the district, but nothing on the agenda would constitute a conflict for them if this agenda for tonight's meeting passes. Also, let it be known that Mr. McDonald will be recusing himself, voting on item number eight if the agenda passes as well. All right. So that being said, appreciate those disclosures. Next item on our agenda is approval of the agenda meeting for tonight. One thing that you'll see that was added as a new business from since when the agenda was published, have a scope conference report. Mr. Brown and student representatives asked the opportunity to speak to us tonight. We put that in new business. Understand that there is some, there are some other business that Mr. Brown has to attend to tonight and asked if it would be possible to move that up in the agenda, his report. So if any board member, any board member have any objections to that?
I would make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda and move Mr. Brown up into right below the consent agenda to get him out of here as quickly as we can.
Okay. I have a motion for agenda approval, moving the scope conference report up to behind line item six.
And I'll...
Okay. Have a second by Ms. Stone.
But also the addition to your minutes for the addition for, or the creation to who wasn't here in the message.
That comes with.
So...
It's in the consent.
Okay. One other item, board members, that I want you to consider and make a motion that we include that in the agenda tonight was we were provided with information from Mr. Ronberger regarding social media litigation. Did everyone see that in their email?
Yes.
Is that, do we need to take, is there, is that time sensitive that we would need to address tonight, or is that something that we could wait and address next meeting?
That I don't know, but I'll confer with the attorney to see how much time we have to reply to that.
Sorry?
I was kind of talking to myself.
Okay. So I would, I would, I would make a motion that we add the, add that discussion to new business item and review that legislation tonight and to see if that's any action that we want to take. So I have a motion. I would need a second.
A second?
I'm sorry? Second by Ms. Fowler. Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Then, then the agenda would include approving tonight's agenda, which we have a motion and second on the floor, we would be adding the social media litigation to new business item number B. So, yes, we need to vote on my motion. I apologize to add that to the new business. So all those in favor signify to say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll vote on the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor signify to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. In our meeting prior to our five o'clock meeting, we went over the items in consent, which is approval of minutes from the meeting held on February 8th. There was one correction that was made to the publicly posted minutes, and that was include Ms. Gill in attendance for both the committee and the regular board meeting. But we reviewed the budget amendments, transfers, policy report, maintenance report, school report, budget report, TLN report, monthly threat assessment report, personnel reports, and sales surplus items. So the consent agenda would be approving board approval on all those reports. So I have a motion for approval on the consent.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Hastings. Now I have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hickey. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor signify to say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is the scope conference report by Mr. Brown. So Mr. Brown, I'd like to recognize you and your guests.
Thank you very much. I'd like to pass out just a packet so you kind of have an idea of, you know, what the kids actually is.
Y'all know, but I'll give you a copy, sharing.
Can I clarify? This is the one you guys went on, right?
Yes, right.
That we were talking about. Okay.
Well, first things first, I'd like to thank board members and Mr. D. Thank y'all for meeting our district. Being one of your employees, okay, it is a distinct pleasure to be at White County High School. So thank you for that. Okay. Also, thank y'all for being gracious enough to move me up in the agenda. I really appreciate that. Okay. But anyway, it's not about me today for sure. Okay. I get the wonderful opportunity to take, to help pick some students to go to the scope conference each year that's put on by the Tennessee State School Board. Yeah? Okay. We have four, and as you can see, they're in front of you there. Y'all know Max Simmons, Jordan Gill. This is Mr. Shane Barnes. Okay. Now Sam Dykis is not with us tonight. Let's see, six, seven, fifteen. He's probably taken the field for our center, he's our center fielder on our baseball team that play over in Pines, and so that's probably what he's doing right now. But typical Sam, he sends regards. He's kind of a jockey, right? Okay. But anyway, Tuesday, I guess it was March 5th, we took our students over to the scope conference, okay, and you can see what they, what they debated. Basically, the students get to pretend like they're school board members. Also, they get to do, they get to play out the role of the superintendent, you know, a parent that's happy about something, a parent that's angry about something. I'm sure y'all don't know what that's like. Okay. But anyway, it's a great opportunity for our kids to go and meet a lot of other kids from across the state, okay, who are very much like them, who are very bright, intellectual, and want to discuss things, right? And I'm so proud to say that our students once again represented us with the highest character possible. Yeah? Okay. So that being said, I'm gonna hush and just let our, what I call our scopers, that's what I affectionally call them, I'll let them tell you about their experiences.
Well, for me, I think the scope conference really opened my eyes to how instrumental the student voice is within educational policy. I think it's essential to directly consult students on what they want, need, and believe in, create policies that are cohesive, and enhance the experiences for students and faculty alike. And I think introducing students into the process of educational policy and representing them further will ultimately usher educational policy and thereby education into a brighter future, one where students and faculty, superintendents, board members will be united and will have bonds. And they'll all understand each other and what is really best for the community.
The elders commission, you want to hear from the...
Absolutely. We do want, we do want, we do want to hear from our fellow board members.
Okay. Well, it was a great experience. Last year, I didn't get to go because it fell on ACT day, and I drive home how important that is. So this year, or apparently last year, the topic of discussion was whether there should be student school board representatives. And so we got taken to be shown off, you know, that's words from Mr. Brown while we were there. And yeah, so I'll just walk you through the day. We get there, they split us up into groups, and we create a school board. Basically, I was elected as a school board member because me and one other person were student school representatives in our counties, and I interviewed a superintendent, or prospective superintendent, hired him on, and then we had a meeting. So it was pretty familiar, just a lot younger faces, you know, no offense.
We used to like.
Well, I think it really gave some of the students who weren't as familiar with school board more respect in how the inner workings of it went, because how ours went was like, three were voted to basically come in as like a, be a director they wanted to be, and they had to make, they had like five minutes to come up with an entire backstory of their lives on the spot. Like, I went to this college, and I did this and this, and this is how I'm qualified. And it was really funny, and we got to see who was best fit. And I, yeah, I liked it.
And board members, if y'all have questions, you know, of course, I'll yield the floor to y'all. If y'all have questions to ask.
Did y'all, I'm sorry. Did y'all brag about the board members that y'all kind of sit with?
Absolutely.
How much you love us.
Before I even introduced myself.
Good answer. It makes up a little bit for the accent.
Mr. Brown, I've got a question for you, or for the, for the students. Artificial intelligence used in completing homework. What were some of the, what were some of the debates back and forth on that?
I was actually one of the people who were coming up with the argument for that one.
That you were for, that you were...
For not using.
Okay.
And like, I don't know, like it just, we kind of came to the consensus that it took away a lot of students' own understanding and like comprehending things, and like how they did it in like their own individual way. As a matter of fact, one of our main, like we discussed a lot, was how in White County, one of our teachers ran a thing, like ran a test and gave each of his students three papers. One that was completely written by AI, one was a student had help of AI to write it, and then one that was made completely by a person. So you choose the best one that you think was made by a person, and it was the person every single time without fail. So that was, that puts into perspective.
Wow, that's great. That's, that's, that's neat. That, I'm sure that, that topic for this generation...
It was, well, at the end of the day, what happened, they bring everybody back together again, and then all the different groups that are broken up, they actually pick somebody to re-debate those subjects onstage in front of everybody. And then, boy, this next part, you know, it's 21st century. They have all the kids take their phones out, you know, they can actually cast their vote for who they thought won the debate. And that's what I put on the packet there. Okay. That's, you know, how, that's how the kids decided on some of those issues. And that one, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, that one got pretty intense onstage. I mean, they were going, they only had two minutes to debate, but they were, they were going at it pretty good.
I bet.
And it ended in a 50-50 vote.
Complete tie.
Students were personally divided.
Yeah, that was. And I think, I think I might have put a mistake on there. It's 50-50. I was trying to recall, you know, what it was, I couldn't remember. The other one that I thought was really interesting was that supposedly all Tennessee schools go to four-day school week. Okay. Students got up there, of course, they debated, but overwhelmingly, the students rejected that idea, as you can see.
Hey, that's, that's the one I can believe as far as that goes. I mean, that sounds amazing.
It really works.
I mean, I've been trying to get my work week that way.
All of us are sitting together in the afternoon, and I just encourage our students to make the comment, you know, the kind of students that are here, they're what I affectionately call the high flyers. They're the ones that get all the advanced courses, blah, 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 challenge themselves. Okay. And we just sort of made a sociological observation in that those types of students, and I don't say that in a bad way, yes, they want to be in school every day, but I made the comment, if we had our students who perhaps aren't as on fire about education, do you think that the vote would have been very different? Of course, and they all said yes. But anyway, it's a great time. Another thing that I love about this is, you know, they get to get, again, meet other people from across the state, and they kind of realize, hey, there are other people like me all across the state. And every time that I've done this, two years in a row now, okay, our students have represented us, again, with the highest character possible. And it's, it makes the job real easy. Yeah? Okay. Last thing I want to say is, for whatever reason, scope was a little late getting us the material. Okay. Mr. McDonald, Mr. D., Mr. Wilson, okay, Ms. Alley, okay, there were, there were several who jumped in at the last minute, you know, pulled some strings and were able to get us in. So I want to publicly thank those, you know, who did that, because it's a great program for our kids, really great.
Well, I want to say this. I spoke with Dr. Griston from TSBA, and she was real impressed with our students. So she was, and, you know, like you said, you've got the best of the best that's going to go to something like that. And she's, she's very appreciative of those that come in and know how to act, know how to react, and not overreact. So, yeah, kudos to all four that went. Great representation of White County.
I thought so, too. They did a great job. Did a great job. Really proud of them. Very proud.
Mr. Brown, I'd like to say congratulations also for this experience right here, and to our young leaders now and our future leaders. I have one, two questions. One, about how many students were there at this conference? And two, are you going to go to the legislation or you have been down there during this session or not?
Oh, you mean the real state legislature?
Yes.
I haven't been there to see them in action.
Didn't, hasn't scope been there in the past, though?
I don't know.
Four H goes, they're there now. Four H takes a group there, their leadership group, but I'm not for sure. I don't think scope does. I think it's...
I don't think they do. I don't believe so. But your first question, what would you, I'm terrible at estimating numbers. How many y'all, what would you say, how many people were in there, filled the Belmont auditorium? I mean, filled up that place, so.
Maybe about 500.
500 or so.
How many, how many students did you say counties could bring? Did you say a limit at the four this year?
Up to four.
So 95, maximum 40.
I think, and each group had roughly 10 to 12 students in it, so, yeah, about 500 or so.
Yeah. 95 counties, maximum amount is four per county, so.
So was all counties represented in Tennessee?
I don't know if every single county was, but if it was, I would say a majority was, just based on, you know, I've always...
Right, yeah. That was good. Well, I do have a question. So you got to talk to other students that I'm assuming are, you know, on with the school board. So did y'all get to talk about them, about how their school board interacts? And is it kind of like airs? I mean, just out of curiosity, with y'all?
So the only other student in my group when we got there said that he doesn't get to speak a lot, or...
He said he's kind of like a, like an entertainment piece, you know? Yeah, exactly, yeah. He said, he said, "I feel like I can say anything," and they'd be like, "Come on." I was like, "Well, they've never been mad at me," but also, I feel like I can speak my mind.
Speak freely, yes. That's what it's about, yes.
There was nobody in my group that was actually physically a part of the board. They had like, not necessarily student representatives, but there was somebody who like, there was like a vote, and then you got to like talk to the board about issues, but like not necessarily on the board.
I think White County is one of 14 counties in the state that has student representatives on it. Cumberland County does have a representative on there. They have a representative on their board.
Putnam County.
Putnam County does not, no. I think we're the only one around here. Coffey County, I think, does. But in the upper Cumberland, I believe, we, us and Cumberland County are the only two systems that have student members.
I mean, for what it's worth, I think it's a great thing. To your point, you know, young leaders, you know, kind of let them see what it's like, you know. Hopefully, whatever they go on to do, there'll be a smashing success, whatever they do. But I hope that they, if they go off to school, they come back.
Yes.
Right? And lead us, you know, as we get older, when we hand the mantle over to y'all. Putting a lot of pressure on you, aren't you? That's, that's the whole thing.
Yeah. I think it's great.
Any other questions for Mr. Brown or for the students? Mr. Brown, thank you serving in this capacity. You're making a difference in, in lives of our, our students, but also in influence that they have. So thank you very much. All right. All right. With that, we'll move on to next item on our agenda, and that's the district update. Mr. Ronberger will be giving us our update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief update, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have as well. Vouchers continue to make their way through the legislature. Again, I'll say, as a public educator, this is bad for public education. There's still hope that these voucher bills will be defeated. There are several hurdles to jump over, but legislators are, certain legislators are really pushing that agenda. As far as safety goes, we have several safety projects that are underway. The new door locks and camera systems are at the top of the list, and those are, we're beginning the procurement process right now. Window coverings are also being installed across the district. And academics, the ACT was given at the high school this week, and grades three through eight are completing the final round of benchmark testing. We are quickly approaching the end-of-year testing window, which begins in mid-April. Athletics, White County Celeste Reed won the honor of Miss Basketball from the TWAA this week, so really excited about that. Spring sports are underway, and I'd also like to mention that the White County High School soccer team is 2-0 right now. Just throwing that out there. Building projects, windows and doors are being installed at Bondecroft. The building, building is now what they would call dried-in, and the interior work is picking up. White County High School softball facility is open for use. There's still some groundwork and other items to be tidied up, but the plans, the team has plans to update the interior and make it their own. Spring break, spring break is fast approaching, March 25 through 29. The school board approved the school calendar for next year, but I've had several requests to reconsider the spring break dates for next year, and so we are taking a look at that. We would like to consider moving spring break to the week of daylight saving time, which would be this week for next year. This would make more sense academically, as it is always my motivating factor, to make sure it's academically focused. What we're considering, the benefits for that would be that it falls at a, it's more evenly spaced in the middle of the semester. It falls in a period that report cards would be, so it's a more academic, a natural academic break. There's more time to prepare for TCAP or intercourse testing after we come back from that break. Good Friday would be intact, and it wouldn't be eaten up as it is this year with, through spring break. There's benefits to athletics and on and on and on. But not to mention the weariness that this time of year sometimes creates. For example, we gave ACT this week, and two days after a time change, so that wasn't our best foresight. So we'll be providing more info about this to stakeholders. We plan to survey all of our, all of our employees. Ultimately, I want to do what's best for students, and we would need overwhelming support. And overwhelming, I mean probably over 70 to 75% in support of that before we'd consider that change. So this would come before the board to be approved if it's supported by stakeholders that we were going to survey in the, in the school system. It would come back before the board to be approved, and then it would go to the state for approval as well.
I got a question. Aren't some of the surrounding counties, that's when they do their spring break, right?
They are.
So we would kind of be all...
Yeah, I mentioned athletics. There's like, it's difficult to schedule games sometimes right now because a lot of people are on, on those breaks, so there are not a lot of people playing right now. But my main motivation is always academics, and academically, it just makes more sense. You know, people are going to say, well, it's warmer at the beach at the end of the month, but that doesn't ever move my needle. But...
And go feather down.
That's right. That's exactly right. So this is about doing what's best for students, and we want to pick something that's consistent, as we do with fall break, so that people in the community that don't work in the school system can plan their vacations accordingly. And if we follow the daylight saving time, it's always the second Sunday of March, and so it'd be something that people could play for, it planned for. So it makes a much better, much more sense academically for our students and our schools. It's a common break. Like I said already, it's at the end of a grading period, report cards go out. Our current spring break is pretty late, and it also creates problems, crunch time when we come back for TCAP. So that's my motivation. But there'll be more on that. We're going to seek information from the school community, and then we'll come back in April, and I'll put that before the board if that is a change that folks want to make. Outside of that, I'm open to any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions for our director?
So if the soccer team loses tonight, would you say it's on you?
We're not going to lose tonight. Yeah, yeah. It would be my fault because I'm not there.
So as far, you mentioned the vouchers. I mean, from the way everybody's talking, I mean, that's pretty much going to get pushed through. Is that what you're seeing?
So I was down there last week. I went to the Senate Education Committee meeting, where it was, lack of a better term, railroaded through. Everybody in the, I say everybody, the vast majority of people in the room were against it, and the legislature's pushed through it. I also stood in a meeting with legislators with every director in the state of Tennessee. One of the directors said, "Stand up if you're against vouchers." Every director in that room stood up in front of these legislators, and one of the, and one of the directors said, "How are you voting for this when these people that represent 147 school systems across the state of Tennessee are telling you that we're against this?" And they keep saying, "Well, we're hearing from people." They can't be hearing from more people that are represented, that were represented in that room. So I don't know who they're listening to, a vocal minority, but it's not good for public education. And what I really found disrespectful was the House bill is being laden with incentives or what they're calling candy, and they're throwing things out there like, "We're going to pay more on teacher insurance, and we're going to put less evaluations on teachers." They're doing all these things that they could do for teachers regardless of vouchers, but they're throwing it in there to try and buy votes, and they even had the audacity to say that if you don't vote for this, you're, we want your name, directors, because you're voting against teachers. So it's really despicable, I think, the way that they're going about this. They're not listening, and, and they're trying really to pit us against ourselves. At the end of the day, it's really harmful to public education. I'll say one more thing about that, and I'll get off my soapbox. It is bad for public education. It takes, it takes money away from our schools. It doesn't work. You can't show me another state where this has worked. And at the end of the day, I would support vouchers if they'll have... And at the end of the day, I would support vouchers if they'll have, if they'll be apples to apples. But if you're not going to have the same accountability and the same requirements for, for the same tax dollars, then we're not playing on the same playing field, on a level playing field. And so I would never support something like that, so.
The other, any other, uh, any other thoughts, uh, comments for director on the director's report?
Be careful, he's wound up.
I'd like to go, I'd like to go back and get, uh, some input from Ms. McGill regarding the spring break change,
because that would be something that would affect you next year from a student perspective. How, how does that play in with the load that you have as a student going, going through the school year?
Well, I do know that, uh, with the, the daylight savings time, like, two days before the ACT, that hit a lot of people. Everybody was like, drug down badly, and I heard a lot of complaints about that. So, I know that would be a really big plus, like, not having that gap where you lose all that sleep. Because a lot of students don't prepare beforehand and go to bed earlier, they just lose the sleep. You know, teenagers.
So, so...
Yes, we do.
So, so you, you would have a, you would have a, a, your position on that, that that would be positive for the students if we, if, if it comes to that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good, thank you for, for your input. All right, any other, any other comments for, uh, questions for directors? All right, thank you, we'll move on to, uh, item number eight. Um, item number eight, uh, for the public that may not know. Mr. Jason McDonald is serving on the, uh, TSB A Executive Committee, and, uh, right now, uh, serving as, in the position of vice...
Vice President.
Vice President. Uh, TSB A is the Tennessee School Board Association, which provides services to the, uh, the, the school board, this, uh, school boards throughout the state, uh, from, uh, from training, uh, they're the ones that provide the state mandated training that board members are required to, to take each year. Um, they also provide, uh, legal and other services that, as far as assisting with, with policy writing, things of that nature. They also do representation on the, uh, at the legislature on behalf of school districts. Uh, Mr. McDonald's been serving in this, if I'm not mistaken, three years?
Um, I was the Upper Commonwealth District Director for three years, and then Treasurer last year, Vice President, so this is year number five.
Okay, year number five total, uh, three years as, representing us in the district, and then, uh, this would be your third year uh, as representing us on the, at the, for the Executive, uh, Board of TSB A. So, uh, he is, uh, seeking off the office of the President, uh, from the organization for the, the upcoming year. Uh, so, he would like to speak to that, and, uh, you'll forward Mr. McDonald.
So, what, what has happened is, is, um, the president-elect was, uh, from Tipton County over in West Tennessee, and he is, uh, he's letting his term expire in August, so he's not running for his local board. To be a member of the TSB A Executive Committee or, um, or their Board of Directors, you have to be an active member of your local board and serving on it. He's letting his term expire, so, um, this is kind of unprecedented for, for TSB that, that you have to go through Delegate Assembly. So at our convention in November, um, the nominees that fill out applications for the TSB President, uh, Vice President, Treasurer, uh, President-elect, all those have to be voted on at Delegate Assembly, uh, this year. So, uh, that's why I'm here, I filled out my application, I've turned it in. We have to get approval either by signature of our board or, uh, via, you know, via the, the minutes taken, uh, action here tonight. So that's what I'm, I'm here, uh, to be able to seek that office and be the very first TSB President from White County, um, and serve in that role, uh, in the year 2025. So, uh, with your blessing, nothing would be, nothing would change as far as my commitment to this board, this board would come first. Uh, and I would just, uh, look forward to, to serving in that if, if so elected, and, uh, if you guys still approve, uh, for me to serve in that role, so.
Okay, so board members, uh, we're being asked to, uh, approve Mr. McDonald to seek the, uh, Office of TSB A President for upcoming year 2025. So, uh, this time I would entertain a motion for approval. Have a motion by Ms. Hickey, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hastings, uh, any discussion?
I think that's awesome, congratulations, that's an honor for White County.
If, if elected, I'm going to be, uh, relying on everybody in this room, from administrators to Communications Director to our Director, uh, because we have to, uh, we'll have to kind of take some leadership roles at convention, uh, provide some entertainment hopefully, uh, so we can showcase White County.
We can entertain you all.
We're, we're going to leave that up to the kids.
I can't say.
I'd, I'd just like, I'd just like to say that, uh... The, uh, um, one thing I'd like, like to say is, uh, actually two things. Uh, one, uh, Mr. McDonald, I appreciate you, uh, being willing to serve in this role and be representing White County, because I don't, I think not only it'd be the first time TSB A had a, a representative on the Executive Committee from, uh, to serve as President, also, you're the, probably the first TSB A, uh, representative from White County. And, uh, that represents White County in, in...
Sixteen counties in the upper Commonwealth.
Sixteen counties, and, and you'd be, uh, representing, uh, White County as your, as your home, home district. Uh, I think that's great, and I can't think of a, a better ambassador for White County school system than Jason McDonald for all the service you've put in. So I, I appreciate that, and, and just excited for you and, and for our county for the exposure we will get because of this. So I have a motion by Mr. Hickey, I have a second by Ms. Hastings, is there any other more discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes, and thank Ms. Sims note that Mr. McDonald did recuse himself, and that, okay, thank you. All right, next time...
Thank you, guys, I appreciate, I appreciate it. It'll be an honor if, if I get elected.
We'll be pulling for you. All right, so next item, we'll move to, uh, travel requests on our agenda. Uh, I have two travel requests, one, uh, White County, uh, High School softball requested overnight, approval for overnight, uh, trip to, uh, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and that will be funded by the, uh, the Booster, Booster Club. And then, uh, next travel request for us, the Junior ROTC to go to convention in Gatlinburg, both of those overnight trips. Uh, those travel requests were, were made, provided in your packet. Uh, so, uh, this time we would entertain a motion for approval of both of those travel requests.
I would, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just want to make clarification that there are actually two of each. Um, there are two overnights for softball, there's one in Murfreesboro, and then one in, uh, April for Knoxville, both overnight trips for tournaments. And then the same, ROTC has an overnight in Gatlinburg, um, in April, and then they would like to get permission for their, uh, May-June week-long, um, trip, which is their Cadet Leadership Course in Kentucky. So I just want to make that clarification, there was two of each.
Thank you.
Four total.
Didn't, did not scroll down far enough on that. So we're approving two overnight travel requests for softball and two for, uh, uh, Junior ROTC. All right, so a motion by Mr. McDonald, I have a second, a second by Ms. Vower, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Uh, next item on our agenda is, uh, school district planning, this is policy, uh, seventeen oh one. Uh, seventeen oh one states that the district will have a, uh, will have a, a five-year strategic plan. Uh, we have discussed those in previous, previous meet, meetings, um, and reviewed that plan. Uh, it also states in policy that every two years, uh, that the plan shall be, uh, be reviewed, updated. Uh, so it lines with the requirements of the State Board of Education, and, uh, the Director of Schools would develop, uh, any necessary measures to, to implement that policy for alignment. Uh, so, understanding that tonight in our packet, uh, that those, those updates, revisions to, two-year revisions are, are coming before us, is that's what we're seeing in this packet?
So you're seeing our district plan that was just recently submitted to the state, uh, a lot of work goes, a lot of, uh, credit goes to the people in this room. Sheila Felton, Dr. Valerie Butcher, Farah Griffith, Angela Fresh, Dr. Thompson, Brian Haley, all of our supervisors that work very hard in compiling these goals. And so, uh, this is not specifically, um, the district plan, but it is our plan that we use as a district to, uh, seek academic goals throughout the year. So I wanted to share that, uh, as what we submit to the state right now, and it could be part of what the board would use at a, at the retreat or their workshop to, uh, maybe redefine their specific, uh, strategic plan.
This right here will go the state for, for an update?
It, it has been issued, at, at this point, it has been issued as our, as our district plan to the State Department, yes.
Okay, so there's no...
No action.
No action for us as board members for, for information, so.
And we also put, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we also put the district planning in there as well, because I know the topic of the school board retreat was going to come up, and that is also part of this policy as well, so that's the reason for the placeholder in the meeting tonight.
And, uh, regarding that district planning, um, we'll, uh, make note of that in the comments about discussion that was had during our, uh, committee meetings about, uh, upcoming, uh, board retreats, so we'll get to that later in the meeting. Okay, any other, uh, comments about, for the director about, uh, plan submitted to the state? Okay, if not, then, uh, we'll go to next item on our agenda, and that's approval for the bid for White County Middle School Greenhouse. We've talked about that, uh, about that, uh, project that was part of the innovative, innovative, innovative school model, uh, grant that was received. And so, uh, we have gone out and solicited bids, um, appreciate, uh, Mr. Markham and all those involved with the county for, for going through that bid process. Uh, that agreement was reached, we did have a, uh, bid that was submitted by HD Homes LLC's contractor, and so that, uh, that agreement was presented to you in, uh, in your packet tonight. Uh, the low bid for the greenhouse, uh, estimate was, uh, one hundred eighty-five, one hundred...
Eighty-six.
Hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, uh, and that was, uh, that was the below bid, there were, uh, there were two bids that were, were submitted. Um, so, we would, uh, tonight be looking to, uh, approve this bid, and so construction would be, uh, could begin per the schedule. So this time I would entertain a motion for approval of the bid.
Can I ask a question before we move forward?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I address Mr. Markham?
Absolutely.
Where's he at? There he is. Mr. Markham, question for you, because I know everybody's not saying it, but of course I, I had you email it to me. So the difference is forty-two hundred between the two bids?
Correct.
Can you tell us what the difference is? I mean, what is it, do they do an itemized bid for you to tell you, is this like for groundwork, is it for the electrical, the plumbing?
So that, the, the bid, they, they give us a base bid, and that base bid includes everything, so it includes...
Do you see it broken down?
They don't when they submit the bid, they do not provide that when they submit the bid. When, um, they will submit a pay application, and when we get our pay application and we start paying, then we see a line item out, and that's how we track, uh, their progress, so like, they'll have to tell us how much that's out, um, allocated to earthwork, and we'll know, you know, that's early on in the process, so that'll get paid out first, and that's how we keep track of it there. But as far as with the bid, it's just a base bid total.
So, and I know I asked this before with the softball building, because I come in on the tail end of it, and I know, we all know I'm a construction background, so I'm a geek on it, but is there a reason that we don't get itemized bids, so we can kind of see? And, I mean, don't take this wrong way, but I know one's from hometown and one's from next door, and I would, I would love if we could to keep our stuff, I mean, you know, to help our hometown people, but I was just wondering, is there a reason we don't get itemized bids?
I'll be honest with you, I've not ever seen an itemized bid like that put through, um, but bottom line, at the end of the day, whether it was, you know, they were off in their electrical work or whatever, um, it wasn't, you know, maybe they had a different sub, um, the bottom line price is what we have to look at, and we can't give preference to locality, so just because, you know?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's the same electrical person and plumbing contractor for each one.
Yeah, and so, it's, lots of times it comes down to profit, you know? I mean, there's a profit built in there, and, and it just depends on, you know, how, how much they really cut in a certain spot or something like that, as far as the profit. But, bottom line, that's, that's what we look at.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Markham? Okay, so, uh, we'll go back to, to the, the, the item for us, uh, we've been requested to approve, approve the bid for a building in White County, uh, Middle School Greenhouse, uh, by the, uh, con, by the, uh, agreement that was submitted to us by HD Homes LLC. So, this time I would entertain a motion for approval. A motion by Ms. Hastings, do you have a second?
I'll start it.
A second by Mr. McDonald, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do, and everybody thinks that I'm a negative person on this right here, but it, it bothers me that when we come to a, a meeting and we just, all we see is, here's the finalized bid, we don't know where it's going, we don't know what it's going to look like, we don't know anything about, uh, the future of it, and then we start getting questions about, um, why was it done this way? Why was it done that way? And everybody says, "Well, you voted on it." So, rest assured that no matter what procedures that have been done correctly, as far as taking bids on it and the site preparation or planning, that's what's going to be discussed, whether it's all being done correctly, none of that matters when it comes to, when we say yes, we own it. And so I would, I'm a committee type person, and unfortunately, that's my background too, with the county commission, and I wish we had committees that you could send this to, that two or three people would be there from the instigation of it, the initiation of it, and talk to the, the, some people that's going to submit the bid, and just get an eyeball and get a good feeling of it, and we could come back and say, "Yes, we've seen this, we've seen where it's going to be done." Same way with the softball, same way with, with Bondicraft, with any project. So, uh, as much as I'm in favor of approving this right now, I think we should, should still hold off and send it to a committee and let them look into it more. Hundred eighty-six thousand dollars for a greenhouse, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for a softball compound. You know, and, and we get five minutes, ten minutes, to make these decisions? I just don't think that's been a good steer for, for the people's money, but that's my opinion.
So, and appreciate those comments, Mr. Howard. Um, and actually, uh, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Mr. Markham, uh, the county has a purchasing committee that would review, uh, the plans that, and they would have some idea as far as when the bid, the bid is being put together, it's more than just you, is that correct?
So, the purchasing committee group, the purchase committee reviews the bid process, the procurement process. So anytime we go through a bid, they, they get, you know, the bid documents that are, that are published by the architect or the engineer, they'll get, um, the, where it's public, got publicized in the newspaper, where we send out emails, soliciting bids from everyone, they'll get all the responses, and then they get the recommendation from the architect, and the award letter and the award criteria, and they review that to make sure that we went through all of our procurement processes accordingly. Um, as far as, you know, site prep and all that stuff, they don't get into those type of issues.
Okay, um, Mr. D, how is that, how was that handled on this project, um, as far as the, um, engagement with the engineers? Because, uh, there's, there was engineering plans put together, uh, for this, it has to, has to be engineered, then, and what, when, and that's what constitutes what goes into the bid package, so it was engineered, those specs go in the, the bid package. We have a purchasing committee that reviews the process of getting bids, making sure that's followed. Um, but backing it back down as far as where this goes, what it looks like, could you explain that to, to the public for...
How that's initiated, how that process...
How, how that administratively as a district, how we, how we, approach we take?
Well, I mean, we approach, normally through the board, we approach that, you know, these are ideas, these are plans, we share ideas that we're, that we're looking at, but when it gets to the point of we're looking at a bid procurement, you know, by contact, the finance department, I contact Mr. Markham, and he sets up, initiates the documents as far as an RFQ, request for qualifications, and we, or request for information of, of companies that would be interested in bidding on such a project, and then we gather their qualifications, uh, determine which those are qualified at that point, and they're given an invitation to bid, and we issue more information at that point, and then we get into the process, which we just described, about how then that goes through the purchasing committee to make sure that all the right procedures were followed. Um, and then eventually it comes back to the board at this point to say, "Okay, we followed all these procedures, here's the..." all these procedures, here's the, here's our plan to build, here's what they say it'll cost, and the board approves that. And then, of course, that, that eventually then goes back to the county commission, right? To be approved for the transaction if?
Well, if, if there's a funding transaction, then it'll go through the county commission. And in this case, since it's through the grant funds, that's already occurred.
Correct. So this is grant funding, this is the innovative schools, innovative schools model grant, which there's money in that grant, and it's been set aside for this project that will cover the amount of, so it'll be a transfer from that grant to this, to the payment on this, on this particular.
Is there a, an opportunity that someone from this board could sit in on that purchasing committee?
Yeah, it's a public meeting. Anybody's.
Okay.
It's publicized when those aren't.
Mr. Howard, I want to get back and try to help answer your question, Ken. Were you, when you're talking about some of the things about this site prep, what's this going to look like? Is that what you're, you're getting in, you're, you're asking as far as just at the very beginning process when it's being designed, what, what we're going to build and, and seeing those plans in, in, at, at that level of the process?
Well, that's a good question, Mr. Chairman. All that included right there, like, we don't have a picture of it, we don't know how big it's going to be, there's no measurements right here. And just looking right here, this is going to be built at Castle?
No, sir.
He said location. Seventy-two sixty-one Will Thompson Road.
All right, so we're.
I'm sorry. Well, what am I looking at differently then? But anyway, it's things like that. Where's it going to be built at?
Well, it's going to be built at middle school. And I, I would say, you know, I, we have a document that was shared with the board a year ago, March thirteenth of twenty twenty-three, in which, you know, we shared with the board, you know, intentions of what we were going to do with the innovative school model grant. And the greenhouse is the very first thing listed under the agriculture department.
I'll tell you what, they were, they were looking at the clinical, the next items that we're going to cover.
That's what, yeah. Well, I'm just making the point. I mean, this, this, these things are brought before the board, you know, to share where we're going. And then the board has opportunity to ask questions or reach out to any of these stakeholders, Mr. Ward or myself or, or Mr. Markham and ask those questions. But I mean, this is, I'm, I'm looking at a version of this document from March thirteenth of two, twenty twenty-three. So I understand that some of the final documents may not come, might not be populated in your folder as far as this particular document till maybe, you know, six or seven or even three or four days prior to the meeting. But the ideas of, of building these things take some time and have been out there for a while.
So, Mr. Chairman, you, you asked, how big is it going to be?
Fifty by. Okay. I have a paper from last March that says, that might not be it though, twenty-four by forty-eight by eight.
Do you have a general idea where it's going to be at, at the middle school?
Yes. It's actually going to be right, if you go in the front doors and you went straight all the way down that hallway and out those doors, it'll be right there in the back, the back of the school near the maintenance shed.
Okay. So right here.
I've got that plan, but I can't see where it's the size. But I'm probably looking at it.
Soccer and baseball.
Yeah.
So this is, this is the.
There's no more space.
I know.
And you're no farther away from the baseball field than you are at the football field at the high school. I mean, you just.
It just seems like a long way.
It is, it is.
Okay. So this is, this is the entire school building right here. That right there, that's an existing building, that's the, the greenhouse structure. It'll be right outside of the auxiliary gym right there. And the reason they put it there is so they could tie into the, the natural gas line because it's the heat of unnatural gas. And then the water line will come around through there too.
And here's the baseball.
This is the baseball field, yeah. So it'll be right outside the door there.
Hey, it's good to see that. I'd still like to be able to stand up there and walk on it and somebody say, stake here, stake here, stake there, stake there. And this is what we're getting. That's just me.
So any other, any other questions or discussions on the greenhouse? Okay.
Mr. Markham, do you have something saying how big it is?
Yes. If you'll give me just a second.
You're fine.
All right. So have a motion and a second to approve the bid for the greenhouse at middle school. We had, had discussion, we need to have any more discussion? I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Markham?
I was just answering Mrs. Fowler's question.
Yes.
Okay.
I just couldn't see it on mine and Mr. Howard was asking.
So it's in the spec, so in the spec book, actually.
Okay.
So it's forty-eight feet and ten inches long, but twenty-four feet and eight inches wide. And that's outside, outside the foundation.
Yeah, so that's pretty much what was in the paperwork from last March. Yeah.
Okay. And thank you for pulling that up. Mr. Markham, are you bringing the information? All right. Any other questions we need to ask Mr. Markham? Okay. Have a motion and a second. So this time, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Unfortunately, no.
Motion passes with, with one no. All right. Move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is approval of agreement with TSU to host clinical experience students. Mr. Draberg, would you mind speaking to that?
Yes, we hope, this is for student teachers. We host student teachers from a number of different universities. We currently don't have an agreement with TSU, but there is a student teacher that lives in White County that would like to do their clinical experience here in our schools. I believe Dr. Thompson can speak specifically to that.
This is for Aubrey Taggart. She's our current speech language teacher, and she's needing this clinical experience to advance her degree to be a speech language pathologist. And so she'll need to complete this program in order to get that certification.
Oh, that's great.
So we would be, so we'd be serving one of our current employees with allowing this, and we would be doing this with a university that we don't have any other agreements with.
Correct.
Okay. So very much an accommodation agreement. Then once this is in place, it would stay in effect until board, either party decided to, to remove itself from the agreement. So, so this, this would take care of us now and in the future. So, so we would be a clinical affiliation agreement between TSU and the White County, White County Schools. So that is what we were being asked to approve this agreement. So at this time, I would entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Mr. McDonald. I have a second by Ms. Hastings. Any other discussion?
Do we have, currently have a speech pathologist in?
We do, we're required to have at least, we have two. We contract out with Pam Cake and Louise Owens.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Thompson, thank you for being here, and answering these questions for us. Any other discussion?
Just want to make note, this is a five-year agreement that can be terminated within a thirty-day notice from either party. And very similar to ones that we have with Tennessee Tech and other, other universities.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out. All right. So with no other discussion, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is grants awarded to the district. That was a request made by Ms. Fowler. Ms. Fowler, you said you just received some information on that and you asked that we table that till next meeting?
Please.
Okay. So we'll be tabling the discussion on grants awarded to the district into next meeting. With that being said, move on to the next item on the agenda is discussion on school board committees. That was, information was submitted, request was submitted by Ms. Fowler and Mr. Mr. Howard. So yield forward either one of you that would like to begin discussion of that.
Ladies first. If you want, if not.
Well, when we, sorry, me and Ms. Stone was at our new school board member orientation in January, we actually discussed some of that there about having committees within the board. And I actually spoke with some of the other school board members there from other districts, and they actually have committees within their board. Then I've actually spoke with some other previous school board members here in White County that was under other, you know, with superintendents. And they had them before. There was actually some with Mr. Haley when he was here. And like a financial committee that would actually go through these papers. And I'm not sure who actually did these papers that I've printed off. Sorry, I got to put my reading glasses back on. I'm not sure who actually did these papers that I've printed off. But like when we get a grant, you know, this size, one point five million, that's a lot. That's a, a lot of money. And I get it, you know, things can fluctuate, especially in a year, interest rates, prices go up and go down. But I just feel like it would be a good idea to have committees within our school board. Construction, you can do a construction committee, everything, that committee meets and looks at everything first, and then they take it and present it in front of the school board. Same with the financial with the grants. And I understand that that grant money is for specific, you know, the CTE. But that committee could actually sit down and look to see what we could do with it first, where it could be distributed before it's brought before the board. That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Anyone want to make a comment to Ms. Fowler before I start? I actually did not know Ms. Fowler was going to put anything on the agenda. I didn't know it. We've not discussed this.
Surprise.
We've not, we've not collaborated. We've not done anything.
I'm still learning, I know.
No. I agree with Ms. Fowler one hundred percent, and I've always agreed with that. I've grown up, or I was initiated with that, that where everything was funneled through, subcommittees first, and, and or boards, however you want to put it, and that they were involved. And then that way, when you get to the full meeting right here, this actually goes quicker and smoother and faster. But now, I, I've had the people look at me like a deer in a headlights look every time I've brought that up. And so I like Ms. Fowler or whoever else has, when we go to these meetings, I just break, strike up a conversation. I say, well, how do you handle, you know, building things going on? How do you handle this situation? Well, it goes through a committee. And I'm like, well, what committee is that? And so you, you start listening, start talking, and, and you come to find out, I've not found a, a school board anywhere else, and I'm sure there are, so you can hold the account that doesn't have some sort of committees, standing committees that investigate, dial deeper into it, and then come back with a more concise and, and report. So I was, happened to be, and I'd like to read this as the board bear with me, I was at a committee, a county, two counties away. They've got four elementary schools, one high school, one middle school, one alternative school, and approximately forty-five hundred students. I said, well, hey, y'all are getting very close to White County right here. Tell me how your board is set up. And so the chairman said, I'll just email you what I sent to all our committee members the other day. It's short, but I'll try to read quickly. And he starts out, the chairman is sending this to their school board members, says in no way are these committees and their time that will be given for each representative to update the board at the end of each school board meeting, monthly intend to prolong our meetings. And not every committee will have updates each and every month. These committees is in place strictly to identify someone to lead each of the areas identified and to be accountable to bring information if needed to concerning each of the listed committee's responsibility to the board. And also, more importantly, you and your committee will give our board administrators, teachers, and communities a person-to-person name to reach out to when something they would fall under the umbrella of these committees is to ask them a question. These committee then would decide the appropriate action discussed to take in and either take care of the issue or bring it before the full board for discussion. Thank you for your consideration. I'd like to read you the number of committees. Now, this is about the same, same size county. They have an executive committee that has three members, has the chairman and two, the vice chair, and then one other person. Has a financial committee with three people, a sports cheer ROTC committee with three people, a campus maintenance and transportation committee, three people, safety and security committee, three people, education and book review committee, three people, policy review committee. They have a projects committee. And that gets into your buildings and construction like what we just voted on right there. Planning and five to ten-year planning committee, twenty-three, twenty-four military medical project planning committee, PR and HR committee, ethics committee, attendance committee, academics committee, and then a TSBA representative, which is one person. Each one of these has just one shy of what their quorum would be. So none of these committees would have a quorum so that they could take any actions. They would all just pass information back to the, to the board right here. So I have marked out the names of the county just in case somebody wanted to say something was not correctly spoken. But to have a committee, standing committee, and we already have in place in policy, where is it? Here we go. One point six zero two, where the director can appoint administrative committees already in our policy. And we have one point three zero, where we can have special committees. And of course, the chairman can appoint anytime that he needs to to have a fact-finding committee. So many different ways we could go about this. Now, I don't expect any information, any action to be taken tonight. I don't know if Ms. Fowler does or not. This is just for information to be passed on. For us to represent our communities and the county as a whole better with forty-one point seven million dollars, guys, there. I think some of the problems that we're facing at the state with vouchers and things like that is the problems that the people in the community are going, bypassing us and going to the state. Well, I don't want them to do that. I want them to stop with us. If they've got a question about what's going on with our community, how, how the money's being spent and everything, I don't want them to have a problem. I want them to come to us. That's our job. So I think with these communities, and they stated right there, someone that they know that when this falls under the situation that they got questioned about, they can at least go to. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all of it in a nutshell right there. But there are counties after counties after counties of school boards that have standing committees and special committees. And they say that it does not slow down their full board meeting, it actually speeds it up. And I asked one of them, I said, well, what is your timetable for your board meetings? He said, we actually have our full board meeting at six o'clock, and then we have our work session with our school board at seven o'clock. And we work on things at that seven o'clock meeting that won't be voted on again until next month. And I said, wow, I would love to have a month to be able to sit here and digest and ask questions and go to the community and ask what they think about it and come back and give a responsible answer to it. So I would love to see that as an example for this board right here. But it's just whatever the majority wants.
I mean, I spoke with TSBA when we was down there too. And they said, there is a, there's a lot in, in Tennessee that have committees. I mean, I spoke to quite a few people that was sitting around us on different tables down there, and they all have committees, whether it's financial, you know, construction for the grants, they kind of lay out the guidelines, and then they'll take it and they'll discuss it in front of everybody with everybody. The construction, they might, you know, I mean, I talked to somebody and Donnie Haley actually would call them and say, hey, I've got three different color roofs up here, three different color metal, or three different color brick, y'all, you need to come and pick up and y'all look at in the committee, you know, get you to talk to to take it in front of the school board. And I think it's a good idea.
Any other comments on regarding committees?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not against committees. I'm, I'm against having committees, own committees, on top of committees, and you know how that goes, some of you that are members of other places. So I don't know how the, how the policy. So I don't know how the policy reads, but I also don't want to make it sound like that these things are not taking place. So just because the school board doesn't have a committee, we hire these people. You know, they actually get this information ready, you know, just like the grant money, you know, softball, for example. One of the reasons why that it's $186,000 or $360,000 is because of all that, because you can't just throw something up that kids are going to be in. It has to go through engineering, has to go through architect, has to have sprinkler system, has to have fire alarms. And it costs 10 times what it's worth, we all know that, but that's the reason. And I don't want to make it sound like that we don't have people on our staff that's already doing that. Now, does the school board want to be, you know, involved in helping those decisions? That's fine, but just like the financial deal, we have a person, several people. I don't want to, you know, tell them how to do their job. Now, whether we look at it or not, that's fine, but, you know, picking the color of a roof, I don't want to be that person.
So who picked everything at Bondi Croft? I mean, I come in on that tail end of it, so just out of curiosity, who picked the color brick? And I'm just asking because, I mean, do we pay one of these people to do that?
It was the committee of the principal, I was in that meeting, the architects, the engineers, the principal consulted with the, with staff. I mean, she ran by all the, she had members from her staff on there choosing colors of, I certainly didn't choose interior colors or anything like that.
And I can get that, and no offense, but what does an architect and engineer, why do they need to pick the color of their brick in White County?
No, they were presenting it. We were in the room there. But, but in all due respect, what I'll say is that building project's been going on for a long time, and I'm one phone call away.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I know. I'm just talking to you about stuff.
You act like this stuff is, not you, but the board sometimes acts like these things are happening in a vacuum, and they're not. I mean, they're public, we're having a public meeting, they're in public knowledge, we've discussed these building projects. If you have a question, you can just call. We've had meetings, and you're invited to them, and I know I let you all know when these things are going on. They're not having, I mean, everything we're doing is out in public. I mean, it's just, it's just.
Well, nobody's saying they're behind closed doors. I mean, we go to that new school board member orientation for a reason, to bring back ideas.
Right.
And that's one thing we talked about down there. You know, out in front of everybody. It wasn't like it was hidden behind closed doors, you know. Once they was talking about it, I just went and talked to some other board members.
Well, I mean, we had a kind of a committee meeting right before this meeting. You know, we talked about, someone talked about policy, and someone talked about, you know.
Yeah.
You know, finance, somebody talked about maintenance, you know, we went through those things, you know.
So if I could interject here, good discussion, okay, good subject, but I want to give, I want to give everybody opportunity to, if they, if they want to speak to this. Stacey, anything you want to add?
No, and I don't want to say that I think lock Mr. Hickey down there, because that's, but I was actually thinking of one of the same things that he was about to say. And I don't want to committee meeting yourself to death, so it's all those committees that he just read off. I mean, I feel like that's, you can committee meeting yourself to death, but like you said, we have people in places already for most, I'm not saying I'm not against some committees, but, you know, there may be some that would be beneficial, but for the most part, we have people in place for this, unless we want to just try to micromanage everybody. I mean, I really don't care, and I don't mean that disrespectful of what color they pick on across, as long as that, and I know they've got engineering, they've got people that's going to make that whole building look as a whole, you know, they're not going to put a green roof over here on this part, and we've only got another color here. So I feel like a lot of these things are already being taken, taken care of.
Okay. Ms. Stone, anything you want to add?
Well, we were down there, and we were asking questions, and I think that, like he was saying, you can have these committees, not all of them would be supposed to be meeting all the time unless you had something involved in that, but if you had a construction project going on, you know, you might have a construction committee, but who's to say that half those he read, you wouldn't have maybe one a year on? And I think it's good to have oversight, and I agree that we do have people doing it, but the book actually does stop with us with the community. How could you spend that much money on this? Or how could, basically, it's good to say, well, it went to committee, and they discussed it, they come up with answers, this is what they come up with, and there's somebody to answer to, and point the finger at.
Ms. Reddell, I'm sorry.
That's it.
Ms. Reddell.
I mean, a committee's not a bad thing. I don't think it's a bad thing, but like Ms. Stacey said, I don't want to be accused of micromanaging anybody, and I think that's where you get to.
Ms. Gill, anything you ought to share with, on this conversation?
Well, me and Max were kind of discussing it a little bit, and we were thinking that you can get to, like you guys said, a point where you can have too many, but I think it could be a good thing, especially for some of the bigger projects, like they were talking about was a problem with people saying, how could you spend this much money for things like that, to have extra input for that, but not for every little thing where the point, micromanage, like a balance.
Okay. Ms. Simmons?
Well, I was kind of, you know, how many of board members are there? Eight, nine? So I was, seven, so I thought if you have that many three-person committees, at that point, you have the whole board, like it's the same thing. You know, it's, you're in six committees yourself, you might as well be in the other three that you're not involved with, and then you have the same situation we have now. So I think there is an easy way to overdo it, but I'm sure you can implement it in a way that's beneficial.
Thank you. So I want to, I just want, don't want to confuse the public, okay? Just want public to know that we do have policy regarding board committees. It's policy 1300. It's based on Tennessee Code Annotate 49-2-2,205. It says, our policy says, that the board shall operate without standing committees, except for executive committee, which is made up of the chair and the director. However, special committees composed of board members may be appointed by the chairman at the direction of the, at the direction of the board, and as needed as the board requires. So just for the public know, that's, that's how a committee would, would be formed, and we have mechanisms in place to do that. For what we've talked about, about potential retreat, this could be a subject that could be discussed at that, look for the pros and the cons, we can systematically go through a way to try to figure out how that would look. But if the board, if the board wanted, if there was something that the board wanted, said we need to have a, form a special committee for, we do have that prerogative, we can do that, just not a standing committee that, as some other districts may have. But if that, if that was something that wanted to be on the agenda item for our retreat, then we could certainly include that, okay? So, so if, if that, hopefully that answers your question, Ms. Fowler, Mr. Howard, does that seem like a direction you'd be favorable in going?
I'm all in favor of that happening right there, but rest assured also, there's also 1.6 where the director has the approval to appoint administrative committees that are standing committee. So, and we could change policy too, but like you said, we can discuss all that.
Mr. Howard, can I speak to that? Because I think in that policy, if I'm not mistaken, and didn't look at it before came to this meeting, but that being committees that would report to the director, not necessarily school board, corrects. We'd go back and look at that, we could bring that up in our discussion when we, when we'd have that, but just understanding the difference, because I'm sure, Mr. Ronbarger, that you've had committees and maybe even have standing committees throughout the district, but they're not committees that are under the oversight of the board.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So we'll make note of that, and we can look at that at, consider that for our, a topic for retreat.
I do want to clarify now, I was just using Bondi Croft brick as an example because it's going on right now, just saying.
That's understood. All right. Okay, so.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I did forget. So Ms. Fowler also was, was asking, and because I've been a part of that before, like on the bid process, so you had asked as far as breaking that out. So all the bids that I've ever been a part of, especially for the state, they don't break that out on the first bid, it's for protection, because you know how they use subs? So, you know, some subs get different numbers than other subs, so it's a, it's a protection all the way down the process for, you know, the whole company as a whole.
Yeah, I can see that. So is this public? Are these bids public?
Mm-hmm.
Public. Thank you.
All right. Good discussion, board. Next, we'll move on to public comment. Policy 1404 says that we allow time for public comment during board meetings, and we have a sign-up sheet that's made available to public prior to our meetings. There is no, no sign-ups for tonight meeting, for tonight's meeting, so that will move us into item number 16, which is new business. We already heard from Mr. Brown. There, the item that we added for this that is time-sensitive, the, the district was sent information out by email by Mr. Ronbarger regarding a social, social media litigation that's taking place, and this is school systems against social media and impact that social media has on, on student behavior. I think that's the scope of it. But basically, this, this lawsuit, if we were to join in with, in this, three law firms are working on this, on this, with one being the primary, and they are taking this, taking this court to seek damages as, as the, as the suit states. So this is a, I think it's referred to as pro bono, where it costs the district nothing if, for the services unless the attorneys win. At that, in that one time, the agreement says that there is a 27% of the, of the, of the, what was being awarded would be, would go to the, the attorneys for, for their services. So, Mr. D, I know that you've spoken with Mr. Bennett regarding this, would you like to add or clarify anything that I said regarding this?
Yes, that, yes, Mr. Chairman. So this is an opportunity that our board attorney brought to us. This is a nationwide class action lawsuit against several social media companies, and really what it comes down to is the amount of time and money that schools are spending dealing with issues that have to do with social media. And so they're raising a lawsuit against these companies that are targeting our students and causing problems in our schools. We're having to hire people to take care of a lot of mental issues that our students are dealing with. You know, we have the Stop It app that, that is a reporting app that all of our school students can use, and our parents have access to as well, and the vast majority of the complaints that we get stem from social media. This, you know, so-and-so said this to me on Instagram last night, or this happened to me, this on Facebook, they're saying this, or on this gaming platform, they were calling me this. We're dealing with so much of that in school when we're trying to teach math, and so we're spending time, money, and resources to deal with these problems, and so are our schools across the nation. And so that's where this litigation starts. We have an opportunity to join through our own local, our school board attorney, and so he has drafted an agreement, as you have in your folder tonight, that would make us part of that, does not make us liable for any cost, the only way we recoup any money is if we're awarded any money, they would get 25%, and then there's a 2% capped cost for their particular resources and time and fees, so 27% total. So it doesn't cost us anything to join, but the hope is that somehow we're able to curb some of the activity that's costing us so much time and money.
Or at least recoup some funds to be able to pay for the expense. Okay, so board members, do we have any questions regarding that, that litigation, and are, are joining in with that?
So, Mr. Chairman, I understand there's no possible way of any complications or problems or litigation against us, or any cost that we would incur?
Yeah, there's an indemnification clause in this as well. I'm looking for a termination clause.
Cost of expenses, 1/6.
I'm 5/4.
And we have a, we have a withdrawal clause as well in number 7, so at any point that the board wanted to remove themselves from this action, they could, so.
Do we, do we know if, like, how many others are, are joining this, or other people's thoughts as far as?
I don't. I mean, I know that it's been issued to districts across the state, but I don't have any, any numbers on how, how many are participating.
I want to make note as well, I mean, I did notify the board of this, I don't know when it was, maybe on an email to you all to let you know that that's a possibility. The reason, and it was sent today, so to Mr. Howard's point, this is one of those things that's come through pretty quickly, and the reason it's being brought forward tonight, according to the attorney, we have to sign on by April 1st if we want to be a part of this, and of course, we don't have another board meeting before then, so that's why it's being presented in this form tonight.
With that being said, let's see, April 1st. With that being said, if we needed, felt like you needed this board, need more time to look at this and consider it, we could, I guess we could call a special mission, a special board meeting if you saw the need to do that.
It's your choice.
I'll say this, with no cost to the district, I mean, what's it going to hurt?
What's it going to hurt?
I'll make a motion that we, that we sign on to this.
I second.
Okay, so I have a motion to, a motion in a second, and that would be to participate in the, in the Fritz Law Group as representing in the class action lawsuit that, that's presented, and I'm not sure exactly what this is called.
I'll have to look it up.
What's it legal that has social media, something?
It should be.
Yeah, I think the only thing we definitely need to watch out for is the, I mean, the chance that they, you know, countersue, or, you know, how, these things, so if we, you know, we need someone watching, because if we can withdraw at any time, we just need somebody kind of keeping up with the case.
We need a committee.
All right. If I could bring, bring things back, back to order, what I, we have a motion in a second to approve the attorney-client fee contract between the White County Schools and the Fritz Law Group to, to represent us in this class action lawsuit against social media. I do not have a, do not see a name for the I do not have a, do not see a name for the, for the lawsuit, but I think the minutes would reflect, and our discussion would reflect what we're, what we're speaking of per this agreement. So, have a motion in a second. Do we have any other, any other discussion? Okay, we're hearing none, then all in favor signify by saying aye. Posed, motion passes. Next item on our agenda is old business, there are no items under old business, so that takes us to our, our item of chairman's comments. We have our next board meeting, it's going to be April 11th at Woodland Park, we'll have a committee meeting at 5, board meeting at 6. The reviewing section six policies, that's what's up this month for us to be reviewing, so if you have anything, any policies from that review that you'd like for us to discuss, please let me know approximately one week prior to our meeting day. Also, that we will be, Ms. Fowler's going to be looking at the possibility of a fall, a school board retreat at Fall Creek Falls, June 11th, June 7th through 8th, but more information will be, come available that at our next meeting. So, with that, next item on our business is determined, so take the motion. Motion by Mr. McDonald, a second by Ms. Fowler. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, maybe this is, motion passes.